Good evening. My name is Mayor Joseph Alde Monti. This is the October fifteenth, twenty twenty four meeting of the council of the borough of Madawan, New Jersey pursuant to section five of the public meetings act. At the notice of this meeting, I have gone into the publishing notification. He had very far press on January fifth, twenty twenty four by sending notice to the Starler Center by posting. A copy of said notice did and had been available to the public is on file in the Yorkson Borough Clerk. The copy of said notice has also been sent to such members of the public as average person such information and goes to statute. Mayor Cooper, our local please.
Councilperson Dina Dunn, present. Councilperson Arlen Tyler.
Present.
Councilperson Stephen Russell.
Present.
Councilperson Ryan Lysing.
Here.
Councilperson Melanie Moore.
Present.
Councilperson Charles Ross.
Here.
Mayor, your full call.
I think please stand for the seat of office. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for its standing on a nation of the world. Please stand for longer signs and please give me a door to the passing of former councilperson Joseph Bud Mulaney and the victim of Hurricane Milton and Lee. Except for any first responses, please silence all cell phones. Council members of the public, please speak directly and clearly into the microphone approximately four to the audio system. We are adding the resolution twenty four dash ten dash seventeen, resolution twenty four dash ten dash seventeen, our of now. Oops, sorry, probably got the page before we go. There we go. Yeah. At this time, privilege to the floor for agenda item. So noted, motion proposed, privilege to the floor.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion pass.
Thank you. Approval of firefighter Peter F. Marvino Junior, Matthew Burgers, and junior firefighter Adam, Adam Silla. You have motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion pass.
Under role business ordinance twenty four dash twenty three permitting and supplement and revise general ordinances for Madawan, chapter thirty four, development regulations, chapter B H two, public health nuisances, and chapter B H seven animals. You have motion to vote in the public here?
Motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion pass.
At this time, the fair and merry collection of rock in regards to ordinance twenty four dash twenty three may do so now. So noted, motion opposed, over here?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion pass.
And ordinance twenty four dash twenty three, you have motion to adopt?
Motion.
Second.
Man, but local please?
Councilperson Dina Dunn?
Yes.
Sorry. Yes. Councilperson Arlen Tyler?
Yes.
Councilperson Stephen Russell?
Yes.
Councilperson Ryan Lysing?
Yes.
Council, councilperson Melanie Moore?
Yes.
Councilperson Charles Ross?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Thank you. At this time, a clerk report, councilman.
I have one.
Oh, perfect.
Okay. It's our closest issue, the following business licenses for October to date. Lavincero Restaurant, Michler Finan- Financial Group, um, collective, different suites of beauty, hair and health at Palacio Collective at two thirty-three, two seventy-three Broad Street. By Casey Cahill, hair by Niza, Lover Hair Squad by Veronica, Teddy's Hair Studio. And as per elections, November fifth, twenty twenty four is the general election. Polling locations will be open from six AM to eight PM. Election information is available on the clerk's page of the borough website with guidance for valid drop box locations, early voting locations, as well as borough polling locations. Please contact the clerk's office for assistance. Due to the November fifth Tuesday general elections, our next council meeting is scheduled for seven PM Tuesday, November twelfth. And the clerk is out of the office this week, but scheduled to return on Monday, October twenty first, um, but she's available by cell. And if not, you can contact me, Christine.
Thank you. Mayor's report, just one thing I want to report tonight, um, later on in the agenda, possibly passing a resolution which, or another road, which would include grant money. And I think as small municipalities, I think, um, finding grant money is where it's at. I think to, as a small municipality, any of the big ones, um, I don't think you can, keep attaching the votes you can, grab, earn money. It's, it's the new way, but I think you have to, uh, actively look for them. So within the last two years, actually less than the last two years, we've gotten at least one point five, over one point five million dollars in grants. And that's what we're supposed to announce. Administration report.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Um, so I, I'm gonna, uh, I don't have much to report that I was gonna share, but I'm also gonna skip it because Kathy Seporkis, our, uh, director of community engagement, asked me to read a report on her behalf about Madawan Day, um, and it's a little bit lengthy, so, um, I don't wanna keep everybody here tonight, so, uh, and so good evening, everyone. Madawan Day Fall Festival, twenty, two thousand twenty-four, my, my ninth year coordinating all the logistics for Madawan Day. I've been happy to see it grow from its early days on Main Street to the full-blown street festival it had become by two thousand twenty-three. However, I have to say this Madawan Day was quite an experience and undertaking, moving a successful event from its home of nearly fifteen years to a new location and imagining how that would look, flow, and fit all that we had to come to expect from the day. Took a great deal of time, thought, energy, and effort. There was so much new this year for this event, determining the placement of vendors, measuring, remeasuring the hundred fifty-five vendor spots, numbering all of them, figuring out new attractions, how many food trucks to have, and where and how to get vendors checked in at the train station, and the timing and to let them leave there to avoid creating chaos when they arrived at the event grounds. Creating a space for the broadcast booth and a large LED screen, inflating the walls of entertainment platforms, fire trucks, and more. The wonderful thing about this whole process, though, is that it tends to bring out the best in Madawan borough. The day required so much more from everyone involved than in the past. There are some amazing people who step up each year to volunteer to be on the planning committee and others who willingly give up their entire day to work the event. This year's group of fifty volunteers were made up of residents, local Chamber of Commerce members, Madawan Economic, Economic Development Commission members, Madawan Recreation Commission members, and twenty high school students. I must extend my sincere gratitude to the Chamber Director Linda Martin and Office Administrator Caitlin Seporkis for their dedication, enormous amount of time brainstorming, collaborating with me, and taking care of sponsored ads, the scheduled events and interviews for the live broadcast booth. They're also, they also took care of advertising and registering all the vendors and sponsors, taking all, all the instructions and communication to goal groups, and collecting and tracking their certificates and insurance that help involve harmless warrants. In addition, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the fact that Borough Hall staff, including our business administrator, Ryan Michelson, contributed to the success of Madawan Day two thousand twenty-four in, in one way or another. I spent a great deal of time reviewing and walking through the event layout and train station layout, adjusting the plans, figuring out the list's growing tasks. The entire TPW department and several police officers were patient and helpful in making sure that all the plans and tasks were carried out for the event. Beyond that, ABC permit approval tracking, additional outdoor electrical outlet installations, the social media posts, and other miscellaneous tasks, including finance setup and logistical reviews, the Borough Hall staff had my back. Thank you to Nicole, Kathy M., Kathy F., Christina, Raquel, Mary, Joyce, Cheryl, Jose, Lynn, Eric, Chad, Rob, Frank, Zach, Guy, Adam, Sam, Kenny P., Ursine O., and Mike, Tifaco, Lieutenant Bissari, and, uh, Sergeant Bissari, and Jessica. A special note of thanks to Eric, Chad, Karen, Grace, Rob, and Christina C. and Moana. Where, whether you checked in on me or offered to help or carried out specific tasks, I'm grateful to all the support you gave to make the day come together. Finally, my sincere gratitude to Mayor Alderman Monte and the entire council for the opportunity to work on behalf of the borough to put this day together. Thank you too for approving the Madawan Day assistant position. It was invaluable, it was invaluable during the months leading up to the day, including the event. The assistant Doug Peterson and I spent together mapping out the grounds, measuring and remeasuring multiple times the spots on the grass and the parking lot, collaborating on the train station vendor checking process among the many tasks we accomplished. My thanks to Doug for everything. Special thanks to Ryan, Robin, Moana, and Doug. Councilperson Steve, Dina, Arlen, Brian, for the time you and the help you gave me leading up to the event and coming in the early morning to work the event. It was appreciated. Madawan Day Fall Festival twenty twenty-four was successful today in many ways. We received many compliments on the new location and the way the event was structured. Many vendors were happy and thought the process of getting that to their spaces went well. There is certainly room for improvement in tweaking some areas of the event, but overall it was well received in the event beyond the fun, the excitement and energy of the day, the kindness, patience, and care people took to ensure the day went off as well as it did is truly a testament to the people who work here and those who live in that, in this town. It is those attributes that make the borough of Madawan great places to live. Congratulations to all involved. Thank you Kathy Seporkis, Director of Community Engagement. So Kathy obviously could not be here today, um, right before Madawan Day, uh, she welcomed a, a new grandson that lives out in Colorado, so she's, uh, taking some much-needed due time in Colorado to spend with her family and her grandson. So I think I join everybody on this board to commend Kathy for her hard work. She's so selfless in making sure that everybody get thanks, but she really put this together and it would not have happened without her. So thank you to Kathy. That's my end of Kathy's report.
Thank you. Uh, turn your report, don't report, Brad. Thank you. Did you guys report?
Thank you, Mayor. The two thousand twenty-four Silver Rehabilitation Program, the, uh, Madawan play repairs are ongoing and the lining repairs are approximately sixty-five percent complete. The water plant well pump upgrade project is complete. The Clayton Street Park, uh, parking lot and Kindred Park improvements, uh, the contractor is coordinating the final electrical inspection with some code official. Contractor did you know today saying they're done? We asked to confirm that. Um, the backup well, the permit to construct has been, uh, received from NJDEP. And then lastly, the two thousand twenty-five road, uh, program, we are currently scheduling the survey. Thank you.
Economic Business Development, Land and Zone Police, Councilperson Dina Dunn.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, just to add to what you said there, I totally agree about the grants. And with that, um, we couldn't, we wouldn't be able to do it without our grant writer and our engineer and the administrator, so I do thank them for all their efforts in making sure that we get everything that needs to be done to actually, um, procure those grant monies. So thank you so much to everyone for doing that. As far as economic business is concerned, I was gonna report on Madawan Day, but I think Kathy covered that, so I'm gonna skip that and, um, she said everything that I was going to say and then some more, so I'm gonna skip that piece for now. Planning and filming, I have no report. As far as police are concerned, um, just the council and the mayor received their monthly report, and this is in regards to September. So as of nine thirty, seventy-five percent of the, um, approximately seventy-one percent of the budget overtime line has been expended. Um, a hundred and ten hours of overtime are expended this month, including shift coverage, investigative cover-ups, supervision, special events, and extending past normally scheduled hours. Officers provided traffic assistance to nineteen police special duty assignments this month. There are multiple community events, members of the Madawan Police Department, um, attended September eleventh at Memorial Park. Um, they've attended, obviously, they were there all day on Madawan Day, and we appreciate them for all of their help that they've provided during homeless activity. The Patrol Division responded to one thousand forty-three calls of service during this reporting period and year-to-date, it's been ten thousand four hundred eighty-five calls year-to-date, twenty-seven motor vehicle crashes during this reporting period, a hundred and thirty-seven e-citations were issued, and eighteen arrests. Um, other than that, uh, the usual training, our officers are always going through training, and I think that that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Recreation, recycling and sanitation, councilperson Arlen Tyler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
I'd like to start by wishing all of our residents a happy Jewish New Year, Shema Tovah. Um, and to those of, uh, you who are observant, if you are, I hope you have a thoughtful and easy fast. Yom Kippur signifies the end of the high holidays, and at that time, we reflect, um, we ask for forgiveness, so in that spirit, if I have.
For anybody, um, here unknowingly, I do hope that he will, uh, accept my apologies. Um, thank you. I'd also like to reiterate what a fantastic day Madawan Day was. Kathy, uh, just, she's a superhero. It's really incredible, so I can't go on and on. I'm not gonna repeat all that. I do want to add, um, for the recycling bit, um, I'd like to highlight that Grace Van Fort, uh, she hosted a wonderful recycling, uh, booth. It's, it's really clear she has a real passion for the environment and recycling program here in Madawan. Uh, she educated countless numbers of visitors to the booth, uh, offering fun quizzes and prizes for kids. Visitors from all over the area who would gift and wonderful recycling items will raffle off to lucky winners. I literally would have liked to have won one of those compost bins, so. I would have liked that. Uh, so thank you Grace, uh, for sharing your passion, the whole community. Um, I also want to mention that that day was, uh, also the last time that I had the pleasure of speaking with my friend, love Mulaney. I'm truly going to miss him, as we all are. Generous, thoughtful, and kind are words that first come to mind. I want to offer my condolences to the Mulaney family and wish for them that Bud's memory be a blessing for them all, at his funeral. The Recreation Committee is, uh, working away from upcoming events. Um, first up, uh, will be the Madawan Spooktacular on October twenty-sixth, which promises to bring screams and cheers and light tons of candy.
Councilman, I think it's October twenty-fifth.
October twenty-fifth, it's been changed to.
Yes.
October twenty-fifth. Thank you for that correction. It is wrong on my count. It's actually wrong on the, uh, the website. Yes, that's what I referred to, so, um, thank you. October twenty-fifth, um, we will be screening one of the greatest family movies of all time that evening, Goonies. Um, so bringing the whole family, that is, it is an incredible movie, uh, one of my favorites. So it's gonna be a great, great full fun night. Uh, hopefully we have the rest of these dates correct. If not, we'll have to correct them on the website. Uh, I believe annual turkey travels on November thirty, and our Winter Lights Festival event December sixth, uh, which will feature our annual tree lighting, Mr. and Mrs. Claus, of course, spiral fits, smores, fun, and tons of lights. Lights, uh, celebrating all of our incredible diversity, traditions, and cultural celebrations of the season. Uh, this is really gonna be a highlight of the year, so I do hope you will all join us there, and we look forward to seeing you out. Thank you, that's all Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Historical sites personnel, councilperson Stephen Russell.
Thank you, Mayor. Concerning the Historical Sites Commission, the commission and the Historical Society have been working with the mom with NJ two fifty to involve the Borough of the County celebration of America's two hundred and fiftieth anniversary in twenty twenty-seven. Members of the commission toured the Ryder House, that is the Blue House, in assistance of its renovation commission. The commission was consulted about sign, has business on Main Street, and wanted to make sure that the sign not only followed Borough Code, but also fit into the historical nature of the Loop Street historical district as imagined by the commission. The commission will be dealing with a headstone in Rock Palace, a cemetery that was recently broken by a falling tree. Concerning the personal committee, I have nothing to report. I do want to add briefly to the Madawan Day. It's amazing how many volunteers come out to help. I was a zone captain, and we had a lot of high school students, that's a great addition of, uh, the ability to bring a lot of work to help. I was also assigned a Chamber of Commerce member who recently opened up a business on Main Street, and she brought her son and daughter-in-law. I got to know them, he was a, I, I, um, a geologist in Ghana working in the Hilton Pit Gold Mine. They helped out most of the day with me and, and her mother. Uh, I happened to ask him, oh, how long have you been here? He said, four days. So he spends his fourth day here helping out that Madawan Day, I know, isn't he? And that ends my report.
Thank you. DPW, R. Shaytree, councilperson Ryan Lysing.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Fire Department responded to twenty-five calls last month. Again, thank you for the, the Fire Department for also helping out at Madawan Day. Got to stop by and see them, they had, uh, interactive, uh, fire prevention display for the kids, which was great. Um, Fire Department also had a coin drop, um, last weekend, so last one for the year, so, uh, a thank you to everybody that donated. Uh, Shaytree, I have to report, um, DPW, um, again, and we're thanked a lot, I'm gonna thank them again for, uh, for the hard work at Madawan Day. They were up early in the morning and finished late at night, um, by the time they cleaned up, um, got everything away. Uh, they did a great job and everything, I was asked of them, so, so thank you again. Uh, routine, uh, street sweeping stopped as of nine twenty-five, um, so we can focus on leaf collection, um, as far as streets sweeping on the counter, but they will still be sweeping the streets as they go through and clean up the leaves. Um, brush pickup, curbside and brush pickup stopped, um, the first of, uh, October, and leaf pickup started, uh, today in Area Four, so, and that's my report.
Thank you. Hey, Dina, Admiral Wolford, probably maintenance, councilperson Melanie Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, nothing to report.
Okay. Thank you. Construction, environmental finance, councilperson Charles Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to say a quick, um, Ryan, I think you mentioned the starting of the tree category and all that stuff. And Ryan, you can try and address me if you can, can I ask?
Uh, first year's big group, right? So we got a fifteen thousand dollar grant.
How much is the entire project over this five-year period?
Um, yeah, I don't have the amount of the total, but, and actually, this, this one came in a lot less. Um, I think we, we figured fifteen thousand for this year. Um, I think it's coming in a little over eleven thousand. And that includes the software, um, so now that we paid for the software going forward, it'd be cheaper each year, so.
And this company knows that what I'm pushing for is an R. I don't know, Dave, might ask that question, ever?
I, I, I don't recall if this company can, can also.
I couldn't, I couldn't.
I think we can ask them.
Yeah.
I don't get it, you know, by what kind of free stuff here.
Yeah, and they, they were, um, willing to, to work with us, especially splitting everything up, uh, pricing, we, we negotiated with Rainout and, like, kind of bits and pieces to get where we could budget it over, um, Batman, I don't know.
Yeah, that's part of it, we should look, we should look anyway. And that's all I have.
Thank you. On the consent agenda, resolutions twenty-four dash ten dash ten to resolution twenty-four dash ten dash thirteen, will most have motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion pass.
And the new business, resolution twenty-four dash ten dash fourteen, resolution of Borough Council of the Borough of Madawan, Montana, New Jersey, authorized. I think this one, sorry. Montana County, New Jersey, authorized American to execute an amendment to redevelopment agreement between the Borough of Madawan and Madawan Johnson, or the L L C. Have motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion pass.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-four dash ten dash fifteen, Borough of Madawan County, Montana, State of New Jersey, resolutions determining open participation on the state health benefits plan, and S A E H D P, health, health benefits program, including prescription drug plan and residential plan coverage. Have motion?
Motion. I'll make that. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion pass.
Ordinance twenty-four dash twenty-six, bottom ordinance of Borough of Madawan, amendment and supplementing bottom ordinance number twenty-four dash fourteen, finally adopted on June the thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, to amend the list of proj- projects referenced there, and to appropriate an additional nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars for improvements to Crescent Place and to authorize the issuance of an additional nine hundred and forty thousand dollars in bonds and notes for the borough to finance the cost figure out. Have motion to introduce?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Second. Mayor, but local please?
Councilperson Dina Dunn, yes. Councilperson Arlen Tyler?
Yes.
Councilperson Stephen Russell?
Yes.
Councilperson Ryan Lysing?
Yes.
Councilperson Melanie Moore?
Yes.
Councilperson Charles Ross?
Before I vote, please. Can we go over it? Any other few numbers?
Yeah, this is just to introduce, you know. But you can ask a question, yes.
Oh, I look through a long one, working these numbers here. I, I got a question to certain things.
Okay.
Like electric for the mansion, just two hundred and eighty thousand? What else is gonna happen there, may I ask?
So, um, for, for everyone's education, um, the borough's mansion operates on old two-bit wire, um, electric, so obviously, that's a much outdated system for, for any structure, maybe alone on a historic one, so in order to preserve and continue to operate that, it's in the best interest of the safety of the building and all those that, um, enjoy it, uh, to replace the electric. So that's, that's essentially what will happen. All of the electric will be taken out and replaced with modern electric throughout the building.
Right, she's got electricity, doesn't she?
And, and a, a large portion of that, um, over, I think, actually, Mayor, and I can borrow that G, um, is supported through the grant from the舊 trust fund.
I'll, I'll, I'll do that question. So is it, uh, what was it, two eighty, but then appropriations and grant money is thirty-three one forty-nine, so about a hundred and eighty-three thousand in grant money? So is it ninety-three for grand and another?
So, yeah, so in total, we received two grants, I think, equalling a hundred and eighty-three thousand. I, I think it's a little bit shy of that. So, uh, the New Jersey Historic Trust, it, uh, gave two grants for the electrical improvements, it's a hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars, and then for the capital maintenance plan, um, which is to preserve the building for, for decades to come, uh, the grant is thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Those are the matching grants that were shown?
Those are matching grants. We're responsible for a percentage of each. I don't recall, uh, the, the electrical one is a larger percentage, and then the, the matching grant on the capital improvement is, is much smaller, I wanna say like ten or twenty percent we're responsible for. Would that be a clarification? Do you want to go on it?
Yeah, I want to, I want to do more clarity.
No, that's fine, yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Um, yes.
Motion pass.
And it's gonna be, where's our next councilman, David?
Uh, November twelfth.
November twelfth. So the public here will be up until November twelfth. And resolution twenty-four dash ten dash sixteen, do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Prove.
Motion pass.
And resolution twenty-four dash ten dash seventeen, Borough of Madawan, Montana County, Montana, State of New Jersey, resolution support for the application of federal funding, assistance for replacement of vacant standards. Have motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion pass.
Thank you. At this time, privilege to the floor.
Just one quick statement. Uh, this is in regards to, John Serto, twenty-nine Crescent Place, this is in regards to the tax questions I've been asking.
And I'm clear, I'm sorry.
Excuse me?
Just in hearing that, Mom.
Oh.
There you go.
I, this is regarding the. I, this is regarding the tax questions that I have asked over the last, uh, two council meetings and then a private meeting. Uh, Count, I appreciate Councilman Ross meeting with me last week, however, we were unable to address the tax concerns. I have raised at multiple council meetings, as candidate Suzanne Reynolds was unexpectedly invited to the discussion. While Councilman Ross explained in her presence was to familiarize her with Borough finances, this raises concerns given her limited knowledge in this area as she seeks election to public office in three weeks. I declined to continue the meeting due to candidate Reynolds' involvement, particularly considering the threats she and Chairwoman Esposito made toward my daughter earlier this year. In August, I was informed by a third party that failure to meet their demands would result in further actions targeting my daughter, also known as my princess. She was gonna be targeted at her work again. Despite attending two council meetings and attending a private discussion, my three tax-related questions were made unanswered by Borough Council members with only three rate, three weeks remaining until Election Day. Thank you.
Thank you for comments.
Anyone else privilege to the floor? So noted. Thank you. Um, motion opposed, privilege to the floor?
How was that motion, Mayor?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passed.
And motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Happy night, everyone.